Okay, it is nine o'clock. We're meeting in the central jury room. This is a regular scheduled meeting at 1200 West Pearl Street. And the meeting is now called to order. Would you please stand for the invocation and the pledges of allegiance? Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, as we come to you today, we want to ask that you, Lord, send the wisdom for us to make good decisions under your guidance and leadership for this county, Lord. And, Lord, we want to be in the prayer for the family of Benny, an employee of Hood County that passed away last night in Fort Worth. And, Lord, just be with his family and lift them up and comfort them as only you can do. And be with us and guide us. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. You'll do the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join in the pledge of Texas. I'm in the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Alan. All right. First item on the agenda is, I know that, I want to make a special presentation. We have a special presentation to the Hood County Historic Commission, and it is coming from the Texas Historic Commission, says, presents this. If you'll come down, Victor. Melanie, is that, are you with Vic? Come on down, too.
She's an associate.
Associate? Do you want to?
I'm a volunteer.
That's all right.
I got drafted, but that's okay.
Let me hold on a minute.
I expected, this is the year of charity.
There's some more folks.
I came to watch.
He's a Lone Ranger.
All right.
Well, this is really an honor because it's rare, I guess, that we get these awards from the Texas Historic Commission. And because they're not one of our favorite groups, we're not one of their favorite groups. Anyway, I sent it, it's signed by Mark Wood, and so congratulations. I want you to get this and put it up in y'all's offices. It's good to see you.
We will, when we meet on Thursday, I'll go to give it to the others and tell them what the commission's, commission, of course, thanks for the work done. And I appreciate it.
Well, the thing about this is that they worked really, really, really hard on getting the historic rights of the cemeteries in Hood County, this group does. So, you know, we're really proud of them, and I know that this group has a real passion for the Texas history and preservation of it, and so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item is a presentation from Martin's Office Supply Purchasing.
I'm Cody Martin with Martin's Office Supply. Want to make clear I'm not with the Texas Historic Commission. Judge Commissioners and Hood County Personnel, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and explain how we've been saving Hood County substantial money for the past several years and how we can continue to be a best overall value partner with you going into the future. First of all, we would like to say that we understand Hood County, like every other governmental entity and private business in our country, face challenges like never before, and it's imperative that you save taxpayer dollars whenever possible. I would also like to say that we would not come before you today and ask for your business simply because we are locally based, but rather we are here to explain how we have in the past and will continue to save Hood County thousands of dollars annually on your office supply and furniture purchases. Martin's Office Supply is an awarded vendor on the TIPS interlocal agreement. TIPS is the Texas interlocal purchasing system and is the program Hood County has taken advantage of for several years. This interlocal agreement is utilized by hundreds of school districts, municipal and government entities, and state agencies throughout Texas, Arkansas, and eight other states. TIPS, like Byboard, U.S. Communities, and other interlocal agreements allows Hood County to essentially tag along on these pre-negotiated agreements without having to go out for bid on thousands of different items. Hey, by the way, if anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt me. I'm just reading through my presentation here, but feel free if you have a question. Our TIPS pricing program is highly competitive and based on a matrix price plan developed by the largest national wholesale office products distributor in the U.S. Matrix pricing simply means that prices are determined by how popular a given item is based on national statistics. High-use commodity type items receive greater discounts; less-popular items receive less discount. Can I get my drink back? Sorry, I've got a little allergies going. We also have Hood County on an online price match program to match major national competitors' website. Whenever an order is placed through our website, our TIPS contract price is automatically compared to the competitor's price, and if their price is lower, our site resets our selling price to 1% under theirs. What this means is that Hood County employees are doing price comparisons on every item they order on our website. As a side note, we have several hundred commercial customers also using price comparison features offered on our website. In addition, we offer monthly coupons, discount pricing promotions that Hood County buyers frequently take advantage of. In an independent comparison of pricing programs offered by a major national office products vendor, the following is revealed. When comparing a contract program typically offered to customers purchasing $100,000 per year to their public website, over 52.5% of the prices were higher on the contract program than they were on the public website for the same item and unit. 13% were exactly the same; 34.5% were lower. What this shows is that while some items are cheaper on the contract programs, the national vendor more than makes up for it with higher prices on other products. What we offer Hood County is a total cost containment program combining highly competitive product pricing, state-of-the-art technology, overnight access to $15 million inventory, and free next-day desktop delivery. The service package we offer to Hood County includes the following. Actually, I'm going to let you all read through those. We've done this stuff. I think you all realize that what we've done over the years does save you money. I don't want to take up too much of your time. That next paragraph, "Several years ago, we were asked by your purchasing department to help implement an Internet-based order approval system which would give control over your office product purchases by the various departments. We were happy to do this as our software system was fully capable of providing your purchasing department with a way to approve each individual order prior to that order being transmitted. Prior to this implementation, your purchasing folks could only see orders after the fact and, in essence, had no control over departmental purchases. Today, over 96% of orders are placed online, resulting in significant savings." It's a common misconception that bigger is better and that larger companies are able to offer better pricing than small or mid-sized companies. We want to inform you that in the office products industry, that's simply not the case. We belong to a national buying group, partner with the largest office products distributor in the U.S. We know that a common misconception is that we operate a small, local retail store, which we certainly do, but the truth is, we do much more than that, and we serve customers throughout Texas and surrounding states and have extensive experience in governmental purchasing. We have submitted to you a price comparison sheet that I would encourage you to examine. I think the results speak for themselves and show that without doubt our TIPS pricing program combined with our online price comparison is more than competitive with national vendors. The data used in this comparison was provided by an independent company and was purchased by us. I invite each of you and/or any interested members of Hood County staff or any interested members of the public to come by my office, and I'll be more than happy to show you the raw data that we purchased for this price comparison and give you information about the company providing the data. I do feel obliged to inform you of another pertinent fact that might be of interest to you, even though it does tend to give the office products industry in general a black eye. In 2008, allegations were made against the national office products vendor accusing them of overcharging government customers. These allegations sparked investigation by the Attorney General of six states, as well as the Department of Justice, and government audits have started to verify the claims. The vendor has since repaid several municipalities from Lee County, Florida, $121,000, to the State of California, $2.5 million, and in December, San Francisco released audit results that showed $5.75 million in overcharges. I mention this only because these events have contributed to a movement by numerous governmental agencies in recent years to revisit their relationships with large national vendors, and a clear trend has been underway for the past several years to partner with locally based, smaller, more responsive vendors. For example, the State of California Office Products Contract is held by a company not much larger than we are, and the current State of Texas Office Products Contract is held by a consortium of locally owned businesses serving various regions of the state under an umbrella contract. If Hood County, or anyone else for that matter, were to evaluate 15 office products companies, I have no doubt that each and every one of them will tell you they'll save you money. The truth is that in order to obtain the absolute lowest price on each and every product you purchase, you would have to cherry pick items from multiple vendors, requiring hours and hours of work and additional staff, which would more than offset any potential savings. The challenge is to find a vendor you can trust that offers a competitive product pricing model, not just aggressive pricing on a select group of items, efficient delivery, hassle-free returns, and a superior service offering tailored to your specific needs, and I feel like Martin's Office Supply achieves those objectives. We've been in business since 1983, and our commitment is to be a best overall value partner to our customers, and we will fulfill that promise to you. In summary, we're very confident our pricing programs are competitive with any vendor, regardless of size, and we know for a fact that the many services and functions we provide to various Hood County offices are of value and save Hood County substantial expenditures every month. We also ask that you understand that office products pricing can be structured in a variety of different ways to give the appearance of offering savings on one hand while taking them away with the other. We will certainly work with your purchasing department and individual Hood County offices to look for additional money-saving opportunities by exploring quantity purchasing options and item substitution where lower-cost alternatives might be available. We appreciate the confidence you've shown us in the past and look forward to working with Hood County in the future. Thank you for your time. I would like for you to take a look, the price comparison that we did that's included there. And I'll be honest with you, when I submitted this, I was really nervous of what kind of results. Also, I'll get back. What I did, I took usage from just a couple of different Hood County offices, the county clerk and the sheriff's office, from January 1 through June 1 of this year. I submitted those items. It's an independent company that does the price comparison. I submitted those items to those guys and had them run a comparison between the amounts we billed y'all and compared to national, three national vendors. And I'll be happy, the company that provides the data does have some confidentiality agreements, but I'll be happy to tell you who those vendors are and what programs those are. Nevertheless, as you can see, our price compared very favorably, I think, of the six comparisons we ran, we got beat by $14.29 on one of them. The rest of them, we came out very favorably. So, again, you know, I was pleased to see that, that we are offering you. I'm confident that we've got you on a really good program. I understand you guys have to look for savings everywhere you can. I know, I know it's a tough time for everyone. I just want you to know that we want to be responsive to you, that we want to, we want to do what y'all need, and we want to continue to work with Hood County any way we can. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, you're saying that we've had this program for several years, right?
Yes, sir. The judge, the TIPS interlocal agreement, we've been an approved vendor on that for about three years, I guess, and Hood County has taken advantage of that program. There's a number of interlocal agreements. Now, you know, and I might point out, your purchasing folks use other interlocal agreements also, I believe. You know, interlocal agreements are just a vehicle that allow folks like Hood County and school districts and to smaller governmental entities to not have to go out for bid on thousands and thousands of different items. So what we do, TIPS is out of Mount Pleasant, Texas, and they are a, it's operated by Region 11, I think, school district, but we submit our program to TIPS. They either approve us or not, and then we offer that program. Tarleton uses our TIPS program a lot. We have other school districts that use it, some other governmental entities that purchase through the TIPS program, and that's the plan we have you on. And again, it's combined with an online price comparison feature on our website. About 96% of Hood County orders go through our website, and so on every item that your folks order through our website, they get this online price comparison feature. So they're doing price comparisons on, you know, basically each and every item they order. The other thing, and I kind of skipped over it when I was reading to you, but the public web, the major national vendors have hundreds of different programs, but their public websites are frequently less expensive than their contract programs. What, the unfortunate thing in office products is we've got thousands, 40,000 different items. Well, you can structure programs, you can, you know, I could give you copy paper if you'll let me make it up on something else. You know, you can structure programs to look a lot of different ways because of the thousands of items. But, you know, our program is overall, we're competitive on the high-volume products and we're competitive on the low-volume products. And again, I think that price comparison indicates that, so I was pleased with that. Any other comments?
Or do we buy most of our supplies through that program, or do you know?
That's the only way we can operate different, is through TIPS.
How did Staples come out different, where they showed they were cheaper?
Well, offhand, I don't know because I haven't seen Cody's numbers, but I think that he's saying the public websites for these companies, well, the website that they offered us is different than the public, the way I.
So you think Staples used the public website versus the MOS?
No.
No. But, Judge, may I speak? Can I? I'll tell you my interpretation of your question. They have a lot of different programs. They have interlocal agreements, they have other packages, and each one of these has, you know, sort of a different profile, pricing profile, so to speak, but the company, I got this data again from an independent company, and I'll be happy to show it to you. But, let's see, over 52.5%, this is comparing a national vendor, one of their most popular contracts that they offer to customers purchasing $100,000 per year, and over 52.5% of the prices were higher on that contract program than they were on the public website for the same item and unit. 13% were the same; 34.5% were lower. That's, it's the mix that matters. That's how, that's how, you know, folks are, not just Staples, but any other vendor, if they offer you one basket of products at a more aggressive price, then they're going to make their margin up on the next basket of products.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Cody?
We're still in a position where you do compare, right, Nelda? I mean, we're not exclusive one way or the other, so.
We have to operate under either a cooperative or we have to send this stuff out and do an RFP for all the pricing.
And TIPS is a cooperative.
TIPS is a cooperative, just like the competition that's been in recently to make their presentation is on Byboard.
Okay.
So even once, some entities offer rebates to us by the business you do. Some do not.
But my point is, upfront, you still do a comparison relative to any major purchase. You look at both programs. You look at Byboard, and you look at TIPS as to what the pricing, what our pricing is.
Generally, the departments go to them and sell, and if it's on a co-op, we do take that. I know furniture is a big deal, and that's where you can make up some of your money.
Yeah.
You know, so we do it as often as we can.
Okay. So I guess my point is that perhaps the educational effort need go to a department level in Hood County because they're the ones using the computer access to either yours or your competitors. I mean, that'd be my interpretation, because we certainly don't make those decisions, and I don't think Nelda does individually either.
And I don't think, we're not here today asking to be, you know, necessarily an exclusive vendor, and I don't, and we're not. I know, you know, that.
Understand.
That purchasing deals with some other office products vendors, and we certainly encourage that. We're just, we're just here to tell you that what we have been offering you and what we will continue to offer you is very competitive, and we will certainly, certainly look for additional savings because I know that's, that's, you know, what you guys are tasked to do.
Well, I think your efforts here in showing the two departments you did that are both pretty heavy users.
Right.
Of various paper products, that's probably where those efforts need to continue.
Sure. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cody.
All right. Bob, do you have any special presentations? Is there any, is there anyone here that has a special presentation? No? Okay. Then, is anyone, any citizen here that wishes to make comments about any agenda item? If so, raise your hand and get, yeah, the sheriff will give you a sheet. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Next is a consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Hearing, Judge, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda A through H.
Second.
All right. Have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item is subdivision roads and plats.
Judge, Commissioners, the first item we have is discuss and consider to take appropriate action on the replats of lots 1 through 37 of Phase 2, Section 2, Meander Estates into Emerald Glen. We had a public hearing in the last court on June the 12th, and it was tabled to this court to allow the HOA more time to re-plant. Staff continues with its same recommendation of approving this replat.
Okay. You want to ask for a discussion before we make a motion?
I know that we had a public hearing last time, and there was some discussion. Is there anyone here from the HOA, Meander Estates, to discuss the Emerald Glen? Was anybody like to?
Judge, I spoke to the president, excuse me, excuse me, the representative that was here that was hired by the HOA yesterday afternoon. She said that their board had no objection at this point, and she didn't, she didn't write a letter or anything, but I talked to John Hall prior to the meeting this morning and John Hall yesterday afternoon as well. Motion to approve the plat.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve the replats of lots 1 through 37, Phase 2, Section 2 of Meander Estates into Emerald Glen. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, on the second item, staff asks the court to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action to the replat of Lot 1278-R-1 in Pecan Plantation Unit 15. We ask that you set that public hearing on July 24th, Commissioners' Court.
So moved.
All right. Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on replat of lots 1278-R1 in Pecan Plantation Unit 15, Addendum 62112, July 24th. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are two budget amendments to be requested today. One is from the district judge. There was a requirement during a trial to assign a contract interpreter. This was Portuguese, so they asked to move $350 out of court reporters into contract interpreter. And then there's a request I received from the director of facilities maintenance and from the sheriff to transfer one of the custodian positions to the law enforcement center to be a dedicated janitorial staff there. The salary for the balance of the year would be, as I project, $4,430, and the related social security tax would be $340, retirement match $350. I estimated the health insurance would be $2,280. However, I'm not sure that the new hire would be covered under health insurance for the first 60 to 90 days, so that $2,280 may or may not be required. But I would like to ask for your approval to make those budget amendments. I'd be glad to answer the questions you might have.
So the $2,280 would be a worst case.
I believe that's true. Yes, sir.
Approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All right. Have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to approve the budget line item amendments. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Stan. Number two.
Judge and Commissioners, there are bills that are to be paid. I have provided the court with a payment warrant for each item on the list, and I provide you those lists. To summarize, they total $355,846.09. Some of the larger items I've placed on a one-page summary. Of course, attorneys, court reporters, visiting judges continue to be a large expense. We pay those out of an accounting fund, number 112, so that we can track that and make claims against grants for reimbursement. Those come to $27,945.50. The jail groceries to Ben E. Keith Company, $18,187.23. The fuel card purchases for the month to Comdata, $44,479.25. I would point out that Comdata has a program whereby they make sure the county does not have to pay for the federal excise tax on gasoline, so that's some savings, but that's still a large volume of fuel in the county cars and the other vehicles. We have several quarterly subsidies. One is to the Hood County Committee on Aging, $18,750. Hood County Child Protective Services, $2,500. Pecan Valley MHMR, $5,000. Then there's $50,000 needed to recharge the postal meter in the mailroom. $26,106 to Somerville County for the housing of out-of-county inmates. And for workers' comp quarterly billing to the Texas Association of Counties, $31,896. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would ask for your approval to pay these bills.
Move and ratify paying the bills.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry to ratify the payment of the bills. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item, three.
Judge and Commissioners, as part of the county's ongoing effort of the capital improvement program, I would like to ask that you approve that we go ahead and pursue the issuance of $2,500,000 of bonds in the form of Texas tax notes, and this would be for the purpose of purchasing equipment, computer software, computer peripheral equipment. We're going to have to provide for two new offices come January for a JP and a constable, so there may be some furnishings, there may be some office renovations required. I don't anticipate having to purchase any new real property. I think we can accommodate them, but I think there will be some modifications that have to be made. It was a little over a year ago the county borrowed $1.8 million to buy equipment, and with the approval to pay the $262,000 to upgrade the net data system, I believe that pretty well speaks for most of that. We haven't spent all the money, but I think it's already been indicated where that money will be spent, and certainly by the time we come to the end of next year, we'll be needing this extra money. So the schedule would be to have the court authorize me to go ahead and proceed to pursue
So the schedule would be to have the court authorize me to go ahead and proceed to pursue this $2,500,000 tax note, and then at the next court, July 10th, all of those papers would be ready, and bond counsel would attend Commissioners' Court so that you can sign the papers and actually issue the tax note. They have appointed a finance advisor to act as the intermediary and place these tax notes. I anticipate we would get a very good interest rate, and what I'm also anticipating is that we would use an accelerated schedule of paying back the principal on this, so that in year one, we would pay back about $315,000; in year two, pay back about $1.1 million. So this would not be an extended, long-term debt, but it would pay off within five years, I believe.
But with that accelerated program, will that have any major negative impact on our cash situation at the change over part of the year?
No, sir. I believe this will keep our cash position relatively stable. It's also not going to require any increase in the debt service tax rate. I think it would keep the debt service tax rate relatively stable. There may be some variations. As you know, because of our population, we have a rather large population in Hood County who have reached the age to where tax rates are frozen, property valuations have been frozen, and for that reason, since we're emphasized in that direction so much, we set tax rates through the chief appraiser, and then those taxes are collected, a lot of it gets channeled back into the debt service fund. So typically, every year, we end up with $300,000 or $400,000 short in the general fund for property tax collections, and about $300,000 or $400,000 over in the debt service fund. And we've talked with the chief appraiser several times, and he assures us that's just the way the laws on tax collections go.
Relative to population mix?
It really is, and the nature of the ownership of properties and the position that our citizens are in. So every year when we set the tax rate, I typically have to spin down some of the fund balance in the debt service fund.
Keep the other.
And that helps keep the tax rate lower in the debt service fund, actually.
Motion to allow the auditor to continue to work with First Southwest Company for capital improvement program to borrow money.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to authorize the county auditor to pursue the $2.5 million tax notes, Texas tax notes. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item, we're down to item C miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action regarding annual report from the tax assessor collector.
Clarissa.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Judge Cockram asked me a while back if I would give a kind of an annual report to the court, just to kind of keep everybody in tune with what's going on in my office and the collections. I'm sorry, we've got a slide presentation for you here. Jackie's working on that. I'm going to, I gave each of you copies of these reports this morning before court started. The first page of that report is a report that we get annually from the Department of Motor Vehicles. This shows vehicle registration and license transactions and related collections by each county. I only pulled out the page that has Hood County on it to kind of point that, and really what I'm going to do is just kind of skip over all of those big numbers as far as where all of that money goes and how much the total collections were, and just kind of concentrate on this one, on the number of registered vehicles in our county. In 2008, as of December 31st, 2008, there were 60,303 registered vehicles in Hood County. The same number in 2009, December 31st, was 60,892 vehicles, which was an increase of 589 vehicles registered in our county between the end of December 2008 and December 2009. The following year, in 2010, we didn't have very much of an increase. It was only 92 vehicles. December 31st, 2011, however, we had another increase of over 500 vehicles. The total increase from December 2008 to 2012, I'm sorry, to December 2011, was a total of 1,192 vehicles. So we have almost 1,200 vehicles more registered now than we did the end of 2008. I had some questions about that with all of that clean air stuff that y'all were working on, so I kind of wanted to cover that this morning, and then I'll let y'all review those numbers. That report does show the county commissions. It shows the optional road and bridge fund money, shows the other portion of the road and bridge money collected by the county, and then the motor vehicle sales tax commissions to the county, and I'll let y'all review those. If you have any questions about them, I'm happy to try to answer them, but I really wanted to touch on the number of motor vehicles that we have registered here. On that next slide, that is the revenue reported by my office during the fiscal years 2008 to 2009, 2009 to 2010, 2010 to 2011, and then this current fiscal year, 2011, 2012. You're going to notice on this report compared to the next one, those numbers are going to be a little bit different. When my bookkeeper keeps up with these spreadsheets, she tracks them different ways so that we can kind of compare state numbers to our numbers. This report, this revenue reports comparison for 2008 to 2012, is the income or revenue reported by my office, and that revenue is going to vary from what the state shows us to have collected, because we have things like hot check fees and customer refunds. If we collect money and then have to refund any of it to the customer, that's not reflected the same on our report as it is on the state's reports that we get. If it's money that's going to come in and go right back out, like those customer refunds, we don't report that as income because it's not really income. So on that revenue, that's what we report as being income, and because that money just kind of goes in and then goes back out, you know, we don't count that as revenue. Some of the differences between our numbers and the state's numbers are going to be things like hot checks that we redeem. If we get a hot check, we can take credit from the state, and then if we recoup that money later, we go back in and redeem that hot check in the DMV system, and then the state takes that money back away from us again. So they give us credit and then take it back if we collect it. All of those little things, the internet renewals, there's always some differences on those, because the state, people go online to renew registrations, and the state sends down a report to us and deposits the money into our bank account, and then we process them. If the state happens to reject one for some reason, then that number comes off. If we get one and we can't verify insurance for that person or something like that, or they don't live in our county and it got through to us anyway, then we decline them, and then the state, you know, takes that money back away from us again and gives it back to the customer, and so at the end of the month, there's always some differences of those unresolved things. There's always a difference between what they show we processed and what we actually physically processed. So there's going to be some differences between our numbers and the state's numbers on DMV stuff. There's always a pretty good difference there. And those differences are reported on a detailed spreadsheet to the auditor's office every month. I didn't include that because it's a pretty elaborate two or three-page spreadsheet. On Texas Parks and Wildlife, those numbers are going to be a little more accurate. The numbers that we report are very seldom much different from what the Texas Parks and Wildlife report is. If we happen to void a transaction and don't do it the same day or don't do it in the same month, then there's a little bit of a difference, or if we happen to have a hot check on a boat transaction, then that makes a difference, but those differences are very slight. TABC, that's pretty straightforward. It is what it is, basically. On the next slide, that shows, we've done one of these for the last fiscal year, the last complete year that we have numbers on, and then the next one after that is going to be this current fiscal year. On the fiscal year for 2010, 2011, I really just wanted to point out the numbers on there for the money collected by my office that goes to the general fund and to the road and bridge fund. Fund 10 would be the general fund, and as you can see there, during that last fiscal year, we collected $506,971.28 for the general fund, and then we had $1,053,834 go to the county's road and bridge fund. So I wanted to point those out. Those are pretty significant numbers for the county. The next slide is going to be, we got one more there, Jackie. That summary report, my bookkeeper said, now be sure and tell them that that came off directly from the DMV reports. Those numbers are going to be different than our numbers that we report as revenue on those other spreadsheets there. DMV is not going to always have hot check fees and some other little miscellaneous fees in their numbers that we actually collected, because there are some things that we collect that just doesn't go into their database. So these numbers are the ones that are really going to have some differences compared to ours. I wanted to point out, just real quickly, the number or the dollar amount, and I won't call those numbers out, but I wanted to draw your attention to the numbers, the dollar amounts that we collect in title fees and in registration fees, sales tax money. Those are all some pretty good numbers there. Just wanted to kind of point out all those collections there. I wanted to just point out also the numbers on the right side of that spreadsheet for each of those years. The top one being the last fiscal year, we have four subcontractor locations now who are doing those internet renewals for us, HEB, Kroger's, City of Lapan, City of Toller. That number in that subcontractor location column, that's the number of registration fees that they collected for us that fiscal year, a little over $89,000. So that really does help to keep a lot of traffic out of the office, keeps people from having to stand in line. This fiscal year so far, it's over $68,000 that the subcontractors have collected. Really happy to be able to offer that service. That IRP column, that is the like international or interstate registration plan. That's registrations on trucks that have like a portioned tags, that big trucks that go outside the state. The state actually collects that money and then funnels the county their portion. They don't let the portion plates and stuff be handled by the counties. So they handle those at the regional state offices, and then that money gets funneled down to the county. So I kind of wanted to point that out. Over $61,000, nearly $62,000 last year, and then over $71,000 this year. On the internet renewals, some counties provide that. The counties can opt into that program or not. We've been doing the internet renewals for years, and that works really well for us and for the customers. There's a pretty big volume there. Last fiscal year, $171,350 processed on internet renewals. This year, over $145,000, nearly $146,000 on those. The next slide, we had a question from the treasurer's office back a while. I think the treasurer was trying to, you know, figure out which offices are taking advantage of that armored car service. I just wanted to say I really hope we don't stop doing that or cut that. My office, as you can see, we send only cash deposits to the bank with armored car. We are using remote deposit with the bank, which means we have a check scanner in the office, and we log into their secure website. We scan those checks and deposit them right straight to the bank without them ever leaving the office. So this is not going to include credit cards. This is not going to be checks. This is strictly cash deposits that we send with armored car, and that's an average of almost $85,000 a month that we send with the armored car service. Close to $3 million in that three-year stretch since we started using it November of '09, so sure hope we can keep that going. Thought you might like to just kind of see how that's being utilized. On the next slide, I wanted to just kind of touch on this briefly. I'm sure everybody's aware, we closed our acting office January 1st. We didn't seem to have a whole lot of walk-in traffic out there. Turns out that it was a lot more than I would have even thought. I knew that the volume was there because of the dealer transactions, title transactions that were being done out there, but this count shows how many walk-in customers we actually had from June 1st to the end of December. The state doesn't require us to keep those daily receipts any longer than 45 days. We keep them for six months, so everything prior to that had already been shredded. So we don't have any kind of state report or anything that gives us a good number of walk-in customers. So what we did is I had the bookkeeper to go through every single receipt that we still had in that office. If the previous owner, if it was renewal, you know, obviously it was a walk-in customer. If it was a title transfer and the previous owner did not show to be a dealer, then we counted it as a walk-in customer, because on a dealer transaction, it's going to have the dealership down as the previous owner. So she looked at those reports carefully and came up with this count of walk-in customers in that office. I'm not going to go through each monthly average, but I wanted to explain that she has a column there for walk-in customers and a column for the number of transactions. That's just due to the fact that some customers were doing more transactions than just one. So that number of transactions, like June, for example, was 915 walk-in customer transactions, 725 customers, but 915 transactions. They were also processing the internet renewals in that office, and as you can see, those are a pretty significant number of those. If you get to that third, let me see, next, two more slides, Jackie. Yeah, one more. There we go. I don't want to take up too much time and go over all of that, but that little box to the right there on that last slide shows the month, how many, what the average walk-in customer count was, and the total for that seven-month time period. That walk-in customer average for the month, or for that time period per month, was 34 customers per day walking in there. So I was really surprised by that number myself, but based on those numbers, I'm kind of revisiting, reopening that office. We've had lots of, you know, complaints from the public about closing it, and I think based on those numbers, we can justify reopening. So I kind of wanted to just cover this with you this morning to kind of let you know where I am and what my thoughts are on that. My plan is if I go ahead and reopen that, and I'd like to visit with the court members after court at some point about that, but my thought is, is that if we reopen, we'll mirror the JP hours and just have one clerk out there. I don't really like that very much, but I think that's a good solution for the time being. If we mirror the JP's hours, we may not be open quite as many hours as they would be because we've got stuff that the clerk has to, that that person would have to do behind the scenes. So I'm guessing we would probably close a little bit earlier than the JP's, but work the 410s like they do. That's pretty much all I got prepared for you. If any of you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I'd also encourage you, if you have questions, to maybe come by and talk to me and talk to the bookkeeper and kind of, you know, maybe talk to the clerks, too, and just kind of follow that process and, you know, how this money's reported and collected and paid back out and all of that good stuff, if you'd like to know in more detail kind of what we've got going on over there.
You didn't give us the Granbury numbers. I'd like to see the Granbury numbers to compare walk-ins at Granbury versus.
Oh, my. If you want it, we'll. If you want it, we'll work on it, but we haven't done that.
Look at Acton, though, that's four people per hour.
Yes.
There's probably 25 standing in line at Granbury right now.
It's not that we didn't want Acton open.
Right.
It's money. I mean...
You have nine clerks.
And one person could work at Acton, and that's what we've said when you were ready to close it down. But, I mean, you know, whenever, in the hall right now today, if you went over there, there's probably seven or eight people, nine people standing in line right now to be waited on. And four people an hour is one every 15 minutes. I mean, that's a, the benefits and salary, that's why there was an issue. That's the only reason.
Well, and I understand that. My point before, though, was that even though there weren't tons of walk-in customers, you know, a lot of dealer work was being processed out there, there were months they collected more DMV money out there with two people than we did in town. So, you know, even though there wasn't, you know, a steady stream of customers coming in there, I feel like that volume is such that we can justify reopening it. We'll have very limited amount of dealer work happening out there if we do reopen it because with some of that dealer work, it's processed on disk by the dealers, and they bring that disk work to us with all their original paperwork. We double-check their paperwork. We download that information into the state database and double-check all of that. Once you get started with a disk batch, it takes about 15 minutes, and you can't stop in between that process. You know, once you start that batch, you have to complete it before you can stop and wait on anybody. So, you know, I wouldn't want to process that volume of work out there and have that disk work going on out there and have, you know, have people come in and have to stand and wait 10 or 15 minutes to be helped. That kind of makes people angry. So, if we do reopen, we won't process a whole lot of dealer work out there. We'll probably do manual work, which just means that they bring us the paperwork and they bring us the check, and we enter it all manually. That's a little bit more time-consuming to do all of that. But, when you start one of those batches of manual work, you can get to a certain point and put it on set aside and then pull it back up later, you know, when you don't have a walk-in customer and finish that batch. You can do them one at a time and stop in between. With the disk batches, you can't do that. So, the volume of dealer work won't happen out there with just one clerk like it can with two. But, I think for the time being, you know, maybe we should reopen with just one person, try to mirror the JP hours and, you know, see how that goes. I don't really like not serving the public on Fridays. I like being open five days a week, but I think as an option, we might just try that, and maybe that's better than just not having it open at all.
I know we haven't talked about this for a while, but what's your, have you rethought SCAF law?
Actually, I have. I've thought about that a lot. My opinion is, is that we should implement a SCAF law program. And just for anybody that doesn't know, that is a program that the county can implement. The tax assessor collector by law can refuse to register a vehicle if anybody has a past due fine fee or tax owed to the county. So, with all of the outstanding fines, fees, and tickets and things that the JP's have on the books, I think it'd be very beneficial. In fact, I was talking to the tax assessor collector in B County down by the coast. I think they have a population, if I'm not mistaken, around 35,000. So, they're a little smaller county. She was telling me, of course, she's collecting property taxes in her office, so she's flagging those records, or not flagging the records with DMV, but she's implemented the SCAF law on all of the tickets and things, as well as the property taxes. So, some of the money that she was able to get collected on that she hadn't been able to collect on the first three months that she implemented that program was $36,000. Now, some of that, again, was property tax money, and part of it was fines and tickets. But, she implemented a program, and they use NetData, and they implemented a program where her clerks have access to a county computer, you know, or NetData. So, when the clerk gets ready to process a renewal in her office, they look to see if that person, you know, they put that person in NetData. If that person owes the county any past due money, they refuse to register their vehicle till that money's paid. And that, in the first three months, she started that program January 1st, and she told me in the first three months, they were able to collect $36,000 because of that SCAF law program. So, I think that with the volume of money that we have sitting on the books unpaid, that we could probably help to encourage people to pay some of that if we refuse their registrations.
And you don't think it'd be any reprisal or any problem?
I can see where there would be. You know, people, if you refuse to register their vehicles, they're probably, you're going to have some that get upset. However, just to kind of test the waters a little bit, the city of Fort Worth has a SCAF law program. Well, they don't really have a SCAF law program because that's for the tax office, but the city of Fort Worth is flagging their motor vehicle records with DMV when somebody has a past due fine or fee. The city contracts with DMV, DMV flags the record. If we have somebody come in our office who has a ticket showing with the city of Fort Worth, we hand them something that shows them where to go take care of it, and we tell them, "I'm sorry, but I can't register this for you. This record is flagged. You owe the city of Fort Worth some money. Here's where you go to take care of it." And there have been cases where, you know, we went ahead and renewed them. But, you know, most of those folks just say, "Oh, I kind of forgot about that," or, "Oh, I don't know what that is." You know, they may have gotten a red lock cam or ticket or something, and they aren't aware of it. They may have forgotten about it. They may have moved, you know, whatever the case is. But, we've actually turned people away for those, and, you know, knock on wood, so far, we haven't had anybody get too upset about that. You know, they don't want to drive around with expired registration on their car and take a chance getting another ticket, so, or getting arrested. And so, they go away and pay it and come back with a receipt, or they get the city of Fort Worth to fax us directly and let us know that it's been taken care of, and then we go ahead and renew for them. And just for clarification, if we flag those records, that is not a hard stop in the system. If they come in and they have already taken care of it, the record hasn't been unmarked, so to speak, then it's not a hard stop. It'll let us go ahead and renew it. If they run down to the JP office and pay their ticket and bring us back a valid receipt from the JP office, we don't have to wait for the state to release that flag on the record. We can go ahead and just renew it. So, you know, on most of those, it's as simple as them running down to the JP office, paying it, and coming right back.
If it's not Friday. If it's not Friday.
And I wanted to say, too, the JP's, I believe, I don't know if any of them are here, but I think that they flag those, I think that they issue warrants after 60 days. Well, we can't flag those records until the fine or fee is 90 days past due. So, at the point that we would be able to flag the record, those people already have a warrant. You know, and if they have legitimately forgotten or don't know about the ticket, then, you know, if they get stopped, they're probably going to be arrested because there's already a warrant out there. So, we would, you know, and in my office, we wouldn't say, "Hey, you know, so-and-so's down here, y'all probably have a warrant for him." You know, we're not going to call anybody on it or anything. We're just going to simply tell them that they have to take care of it before they can renew their vehicle, and they'd have to go back and pay it and get, you know, a receipt or whatever, or work out payment arrangements with the JP office. Again, that's not a hard stop. So, if they go down to the JP office and they don't have the money, they can work out a payment arrangement with them if they accept one, and then they can come back, you know, with something from the JP office saying that they've worked out an agreement, and then we go ahead and renew the registration. So, you know, again, it's not a hard stop. I'm sure we'd have some upset customers, but so far, on the ones we've turned away for the city of Fort Worth, we have not had anybody just really raise cane about it.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Teresa? Thank you very much. Good report.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve the annual report from the tax assessor collector.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Rowan II, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again, Teresa. Considering take appropriate action regarding the presentation, group of individuals pursuant to beautification of the, around the exterior of the square, Commissioner, Precinct 4, Steve.
Judge, we had a couple of meetings. This is a group of individuals that come from Granbury Beautification Council, along with the Historic Merchants Association, and I believe Scott Young and Brenda Hyde and Heather Cleveland are here this morning. We've met two or three times, and they want to just bring a presentation forward. They're going to ask if they can proceed with, to the beautification council, I believe, to ask for funding, and they've got a slideshow and a demonstration of what they'd like to do on the exterior of the parking lot of the square.
Commissioner Heatherton has had some surgery, and he's going to leave at this time, so he's not getting mad and leaving. He's...
It's one of them things. I've tried that chair every which way, and I can't ride it.
All right. Any help?
No. All right.
There you go. I call number one.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Heather Cleveland. I've owned and operated the Panhandle on the square for the last 18 years, and like Steve said, I'm here representing a committee that was formed as a response to a tourism seminar that was presented last year by Dr. Jim Petrick from Texas A&amp;M. And he took the opportunity to discuss tourism issues with us and where we could maybe stand for a little improvement. And so, the committee that I'm representing today is a beautification committee, and also, we are joined by Charlie Parrish, Scott Young, Brenda Hyde. So, what I'm here today to do is to ask for permission to proceed with this project that we have in mind, and it is a request for approval. Now, you have in front of you, I believe, a copy of a proposal. Scott, do we have copies of the proposal? No? Okay. Sorry. We will get those copies to you. We have a proposal that was submitted by Karen Richardson. She's a landscape architect from Glen River Studio. She's worked on several projects just like this. So, just to kind of give you an overall idea of where we're headed with this, this is strictly conceptual at this point. But, what we realized is, when we look out the windows of our businesses on the square, we have this great bone structure, this beautifully restored courthouse, these great buildings, but when you take a hard look at it, it's got some pretty hard edges right now. There's no greenery. There's nothing really soft.
Looks more like a mental institution, doesn't it?
Well, I wasn't going to say that, but...
All it needs is Konstantinawire and a fence.
Exactly.
It looks a little stark, I would say. So, I'm going to, I hope you can hear me okay. What I'd like to do is show you, this is in the proposal. Obviously, it's an aerial view. You can see the red dots, and I show on the perimeter of the burn on the corners and at the midway points on the streets around the square. We also show the four red dots at the internal, interior corners of the parking area, right up at corner 11. Now, we realize we may not get everything we asked for initially, which is about the upstairs. So, this is what it looks like now.
Yep.
You might elaborate right there, Heather, what you're wanting to do in the future because of that corner.
Do you see where the lines are on the asphalt? That would be an area where we were thinking about perhaps doing either freestanding or built-in planters, containing ornamental trees, ornamental plantings, that sort of thing. I'm not pointing, I'm pushing the right button here.
While you're here, what's that going to do to place into the booths and things when you have like a Fourth of July and things like that?
That is one of the issues that we'll have to address during the approval process when we're getting fine to fine approval on this. We'll have to look at those types of issues as far as liability spacing, sightlines when we get onto the square. Those are one of the things.
It was brought up that before that they would like to raise that and then paint it out, and I told them that road operations and the county attorney would never allow them just to put a planter out there in the middle of the street without it being a raised intersection. And so, that, the four corners right now, they said what they could do is also go back on the corners themselves, on the lawn, and work off that area if they, if the county attorney did not approve whatever they come up with. They don't have their funding yet. They're just asking, is they move forward right now to have some options?
I'm just saying that they would lose...
They understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, also, Steve, I think that raised on that corner, you've got a sightline issue because, and that's really part of why they're blocked off, is you can see, as you come around the corner, you can see if folks are moving in or out of parking spaces.
You know, and that may turn out not to be a problem.
But, moving back on the lawn's certainly an option.
These are just shots of what the square looks like now. As you can see...
It's abandoned.
A little hard.
Must've been Sunday morning or something.
Yeah, it was a weekday afternoon. Now, last of all, I was in McKinney. They have a beautiful square as well. Look at the difference. These are freestanding pots. They're in groups of three and five.
Big difference.
Color, softening.
Yeah.
These are also photographs I've taken as I've traveled for the last couple of years, where plantings, and often freestanding plantings, it's usually commercial retail applications. This is an old fort. These are built-in plantings. They're clear. Color, color is energy, and to me, it provides an vibrant atmosphere that lends itself to people wanting to be here, wanting to come and visit, to enjoy what we have. We're just, you know, if you think of our square as kind of our living room, we're putting our best foot forward if we're wanting to make it look good. And again, these are just concepts. We don't have anything carved in stone. We realize that's part of this process. And even though we put a proposal, we will have copies of a proposal that states this right now, I mean, we're not asking to come. We are looking at private funding, not only to begin this process, but to continue it.
Maintain it.
Yes, sir. We are looking at a similar concept to... Like the Adopt a Highway program, where maybe we get businesses or entities in the historic district to maybe adopt a corner of the square and help with the funding and the maintenance of these pots. We are looking at a cooperative opportunity with the city where we have a verbal agreement, a strong verbal agreement from Wayne McKethen, that the city parks department would be willing to do the watering and the maintenance on these pots. We'd love to work in conjunction with either the Master Gardeners Program or Tarleton's Horticulture Program when it comes to keeping these planted and looking good. So, there's plenty of cooperative opportunities involved in this. And so, today, we are just asking permission to proceed with this. And the next thing is, we just need to get the money. So, thank you very much. Do you have questions?
Yeah, no. I really like it, and I think they look really nice.
Question B, could you have it done by Friday?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we allow y'all to proceed on this project.
I would second that.
They also have plans in the future, after we have a redadification, to putting matching benches, you know, around the square theirself. Right now, they know and they understand the same rules that we have to adhere to. They can't put greenery around the square. They're not looking at adding trees up against the building. They just want to have a place to sit and to draw people and interest to. So, they've got, they've done a lot of work on this. We've met two or three times, right, Heather? And so, you know, it needs to be sent to the county attorney for his approval as well, but that's what they're after before they go to the beautification council and ask for funding.
Like I said, I made the motion, Dick seconded it, to let you guys proceed. Once we get a little further down, we'd like to, you know, to consider something a little closer up to the courthouse, too, because it's pretty barren down there also. You know, it looks like a desert down there, but anyway.
Well, thank you. We'd love to keep pursuing this and look forward.
And I think realistically, at some point in time, there could be some, probably some financial consideration given by the county as well for those portions of plants that help actually decorate our building.
Okay.
You know, that's to be determined once you... You know, that's to be determined once you get a plan in place.
I'd like to thank the committee for doing all of this work, and Commissioner Barry for being a part of it too. So, thank y'all very much. So, have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding implementation of a ADRS program. What has happened is, is that we got a request several weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, that the Mission Granberry wanted to take part of the money that's been collected on the ADRS program and use it in a CPS. And there's some problems in doing that, and I'll explain those. First of all, the Texas Bar Association, which the Bar Association has to be a part of this administration of this, for the state of Texas has said that you shouldn't use, that shouldn't be used for CPS cases, should not. This is strictly a civil matter, and District Courts, County Courts at law, probate courts, justices, peace courts can refer things to this ADRS system. And then, on the, the other thing it says, is that the Commissioners Court will administer this, and the money is only to be used to maintain, to establish and maintain the system. And I don't, you know, and not for, I don't think, you know, we can contract with a third party, but it's only to be used in those cases and not for anything else, according to the law of the state of Texas. And, but anyway, this money has been collected for quite a while with, and we went back and looked in the minutes, and we can't see where Commissioners Court approved the collection of it. So, that's what we're here today for, is just to approve that. If we don't, then we'll have to go back and try to find the people that paid the money in. And the state has already said, through an Attorney General opinion, that we don't have to send it back to them. But if we don't approve this, then that's the other alternative. Stan, you have something?
Yes, Your Honor. We went back and looked at the county records. I have lists and list of these fees that have been collected. I believe the county clerk's office began in 1999, at the end of that year, collecting those fees. The bulk of them have been collected since 2005, when the district clerk began collecting that fee. And to date, my records indicate that the district clerk has collected about $64,000 in those alternative dispute resolution fees. The county in total has collected $117,260 in those fees, and that has been since 1999.
Stan, I have a basic question here. If what I'm hearing is correct, that we can find no record of this body ever having, which is way before any of our times, never having approved the collection of these, then who authorized these two departments to start collecting them?
I'm not sure about the documentation on that, Commissioner. In the absence of records, I would just have to surmise that there was some discussion about it and it was not properly documented. That's the only thing I could conclude, in the absence of any written evidence to the contract.
The attorney I talked to yesterday indicated that if we have $100,000 in the fund, and this attorney's pretty familiar with county government, it'd probably cost us twice that to return it. Because a number of these people going back to, I believe, 1990 are either now deceased, so you're into a second or a third level of will and testament settlements as to who the money would go to, plus locating them, plus many of them are out of the city, out of the state. It'd be a very expensive process. So it seems like ADRS is the only logical means by way to manage this fund and distribute it according to the law.
It would make a great deal of sense to do that, to try to go back and look at each case file and identify the appropriate party.
And then find them.
It's almost an impossible task. And I think the clear intent in the collection of the fees was for such a program, so this would properly follow through on that, in my view. And I'm not a lawyer, but I have checked with the treasurer, and these funds are still on deposit, they have not been forwarded to the comptroller's office in any way.
I'd still like to have some more research done as to how this collection began. I'd like to know who authorized that or who pulled the trigger, because apparently, I mean, most of the records that are available are probably as good for this body as anywhere else. But if they don't show a previous court having approved it, I'm really curious as to how it started.
That's a very good question. Several people have made a very good effort, good faith effort, to try to find it, and there just seems to be no written record.
Again, one of the things that says, "The Commissioners Court of a county, by order, may establish an alternative dispute resolution system for the peaceable, peaceable and expeditious resolution of disputes. The Commissioners Court may do all the necessary acts to make the alternative dispute resolution system effective, including contracting with a third party, making reasonable rules to regulate the system, investing management committee." Management of the system in a committee selected by the County Bar Association, and we'd have to work with them on doing that. But this, right now, is just to establish it.
I don't want to give it to the state, that's for sure. I'm bitter about that anyway, but how do we, how do we go forward then to solve this and fix this problem?
I think we just approve forming a formal ADRS.
Then you're going to get with the state board, I mean, the local board?
Yeah, the local bar association.
Right.
And they will, we have to work with them. Overall management, the treasurer's office will collect the fees from the various clerks, and they're paying into that account, and that's already set up, I guess. But we've got to do this part before we can pursue it.
Yeah.
And then we would maintain a separate fund for separate accounting for every one of these.
As I understand it, the Bar Association, Steve, will form a committee to manage this that will include people other than attorneys.
Well, I agree. To try to find them and send it back to individuals, it costs a lot more than we have at the bank.
So I'd make the motion that we give the judge approval to pursue the formalizing of an ADRS through the local bar association.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Rome, seconded by Commissioner Barry, to continue with the implementation and setup of the, an ADRS system for Hood County. Any further discussion?
Mary, the county clerk wants to say something, I believe.
Mary? You want to come up here so we can?
I just wanted to get this in before your vote. At the time that I found that there was nothing on record for us to collect that money, I immediately quit collecting it.
I know you did.
So, in that motion, if I read the law right, you also have to give me permission to collect it.
Okay.
Well, what's odd to me, when I look at the way this money was collected, the county clerk collected most of theirs in the 2000, 99 up to 2008, and district clerk started in '05 through '12. I have a tendency to believe somewhere, I mean, that's where the district clerk's at right now, is school, I believe. Something you picked up at school and it came back, I mean, it doesn't make sense. What I don't understand is, that's why we need to find a solution to move forward and go forward with this. Because somebody, the county clerk side collected the majority of theirs to a certain point. The district clerk started at another point and collected the majority of theirs. And, you know, that's why, I don't understand that.
All right. And since I was not involved at the time, and I'm just going back to 1999, in 1999, we had a new clerk. And I am making an assumption here. When she used to come back from school, she would give her chief deputy or whoever was working on it, her notes that were typed up, talking about where there were going to be increases in fees. And I have a feeling, and I have no way of knowing this, but I have a feeling that that chief deputy went down and saw, oh, we can start charging $10. And then, when it came about again, and they went up in fees in 90, in 2000, it went up to $15, I think there was an assumption made there, that possibly, sometimes when you read those things, if you don't go back to the law itself and read it, what you get from, from school is a little blurb. And I truly think that that's probably what happened and how this happened, that the chief deputy just didn't realize it had to go before the commission.
Yeah, it's probably the case.
That's the best explanation I have. When we went back to research if it had ever come through court, we went back all the way to its inception in 1987, just to make sure, and we never found it on an agenda.
Okay.
Did I hear you say, or did I dream, that you've contacted Attorney General's office?
Yes.
And?
And I sent the Attorney General opinion over to Stan, and they said if the fee that was collected was not over $100, that they didn't, we didn't have to send it back, right? The individual fees.
I understood that it was not required to return it to the comptroller.
Right. So we either have to approve it or try to give it back to the people. Is that what you understood?
That seems to be the clear meaning.
If we don't approve this, we have no way of spending that money.
I'm not an attorney, I couldn't give an opinion, but from just the working and understanding, that was the meaning I'd be returning.
Okay. Well, the motion is to establish a, an ADRS system and to be administered by the Bar Association, and authorizing the county clerks, or the clerks of the various courts to collect a fee not to exceed $15.
To continue.
Is the county attorney in this loop?
Pardon?
Is the county attorney in this loop?
I'm not sure.
Then, we've been down this road before.
Well, I think, I think we should not assume it, but make mention in the motion that the county attorney would be the liaison between us and the Bar Association.
I've sent it back to county attorney before we vote on it. We've waited two weeks on it, a month on it, and, but Attorney General has rendered an opinion to the judge, but the county attorney needs to be involved in this.
You're right. Because it's basically, ADRS is a contract.
We just need to make sure it's done right, so the money is not a penalty to us. We don't have to send it to the Susan Combs. I don't want to send it to the comptroller, I want to be able to use it. I mean, I agree with exactly what Mary said. I figure that they've gone to school, and they've come back, and they've set up their fee schedule. Somewhere, I figure, there's a piece of paper that had a fee schedule set on it. We approve fee schedules every day for the sheriff's office, and Don Lenny's office for culverts, and we probably approve that somewhere, not this court, but some court, and...
Not identifying it specifically.
Exactly. So, I mean, we need to just find the solution to move forward and then get this done by the Bar Association and do it right. But I think the county attorney needs to be in the loop.
Let me amend the motion to read then, that the, make the motion to have the judge, with the cooperation of the county attorney, move forward on establishment of an ADRS system.
And then I'll second your amended motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Rome, seconded by Commissioner Barry, to refer this to the, we're going to approve it upon approval of the county attorney, and collect that fee, if approved, of not to exceed $15, for the setting up of a civil case out of the various courts. And one of, some of the things that we could do is suit for delinquent taxes, condemnation proceedings under Chapter 21 of the Property Code, proceeding under Title C, or subtitle C, Title VII, the Health and Safety Code, the county, so the clerks will collect that upon approval. Anyway, any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on request to replacement of a PC out of Fund 55 for the IT department. Jackie?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Coming to you today, during some storms that came through on the week of the 11th, we had several systems that were affected from that storm. Some of those were computer systems, some of those were auxiliary systems, one of which is part of our door control system in this building. We have people coming on site today and tomorrow to evaluate the doors' control system here in this building, and to decide if that was in fact a lightning-related incident. Also, they're going to evaluate the door control computer system, just to make sure that there's no associated problems with that as well. We lost a couple of systems over in IT. One of those was just repairable, with minimal work on it that we had in-house. We have one system, though, that we are somewhat crippled with. It's really not functional, and that is in use by one of the employees there, and we need to get that system back up and running. And so I'm coming to you today to discuss how best to replace this system. The cost for the computer is $852. Quote comes from Dell. We have evaluated that and looked at several possibilities of replacement. It includes the computer system alone and not any monitors or any auxiliary equipment with it. My question for the court is, is it best to request this from 55 in case we have more damage from this storm that would push us over our insurance, our minimum amount that we have there, which in discussion, I believe, is a $5,000 deductible. And that's what we're kind of waiting on, on that, is to hear from our door system, or if needed, to actually make an amendment to one of our line items and take care of that in that manner. I was just going to offer, either way, I mean, we're open to that, it's just one of those things, I really need to get that system back in that user's hands where they can be fully productive.
I'd say take it out of 55, and until, if it goes over, then we can file an insurance claim. What do you think, Stanley?
I agree with you.
Makes sense.
Motion to approve and allow him to go to Fund 55 for this one computer. Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rome, to approve the purchase of a PC, equipment damaged in a storm for an amount of $852. Be taken out of Fund 55. Any further discussion?
Judge, I'll just add to that real quick. We also had several, one other office that had several monitors that were also affected in this, so we've had several reports of collateral-type damage, both in this building and in our building.
You're talking about county clerks? Had two?
Clerk had three monitors, I think.
Three?
Three there, so we're taking care of those, and we're keeping track of that and the amounts, and we're going to stay in touch with Bob, so as soon as we know where we're at on that, we will total that up and be back.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five is to take appropriate action on the Lake Graberry Medical Center. That contract is not ready yet, coming back from the other entity, so I would make a motion that we move this to the July 10th court.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? The motion carried. Item number six is consider and take appropriate action regarding the flood zone on Highway 44, South Ruff Creek. Take appropriate action. And I have a person, Keith Mungin, would you like to come forward and speak, please, Keith?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Keith Mungin. Y'all have talked to me before at the last meeting. I think one of the driving issues here with this Ruff Creek stuff is money. Everybody's worried about money, money in. This whole meeting here today has been considerably about money, people wanting money out of your pockets. What's interesting about this is money in is money out, or money out is money in, in this situation. this situation. You have a situation here where monetaries paid in flood insurance annually is being taken away from the county, is being taken away from the city. It's, on average, here, just for a rough number that I wrote down, so properties paying, on average, $400 a year, that's, we're talking about 50-plus properties of actual houses. You're talking about $20,000 a year annually that's being paid out in this flood insurance that is just absolutely unnecessary, that could be brought into this. So you take that over the last 10 years, that's $200,000 that has been taken out of this county. So I believe the numbers that have been presented to get this fixed will come back to the county in its own way, naturally. It will also increase the, the, one of the problems that you have with this also are, we're talking about pieces of property that have been devaluated. Builders won't come in and do anything with the properties because it's going, it's just not cost-effective for them, whereas they can take big developmental areas and take care of all these FEMA problems naturally, because they're going to get a big compensation in return. So if it's $100, $150,000, that's just the cost of doing business for these big companies. But when you come to the small guy here, that's why we rely on y'all to get this done. I honestly believe the monetaries that are going to be put out here will come back to the county in a good way, and I know there's been a lot of wild comments thrown around and stuff like that, and I've had nothing to do with any of them. I probably won't be blamed for them, but whatever. But we're just trying to get this taken care of where the property owners in these areas are taken care of. The money's going to come back, it's just a matter of time. If, if we're not going to get taken, get this taken care of, do we devalue the properties? Lessen the tax rolls? It's a very legitimate question, have, have our values been devalued? So that's more money that's going to be lost. That'll be up to the tax appraisal district to take care of that. I don't know how they'd want to do that, or how they'd want to handle that, but I'm sure we can get them involved in this somehow, some way. The other thing that I have for you here is, how do I get in the loop to understanding for these upcoming FEMA meetings? Is there a meeting today?
This is it.
There is a meeting?
It's only because I read it on the Hood County News website. I mean, Alva Cox is the one that's involved. I called Alva, and it's not to do with your type of situation, the way I understand it, sir.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out. How do I get involved in this to understand that the average citizen out here, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, they're trying to make money?
James McCoslin is the county's flooded plane administrator. He gets all the notices and updates on when we're going to have meetings about FEMA, BRA, or flood planes, okay? And so James would be one of the first contacts to, for an email system to be notified.
Right, and he's sitting in the room back here, so...
I know James.
Yeah.
He was my first contact on this whole deal. When I started this, I had new elevation certificates produced on my house at my own expense, and when they came back, I took it to my insurance company, and they wanted $43,000 per year to insure my property. So I took that same elevation certificate to James, laid it on his desk, and he looked at me and says, "Oh, you can't build there." I said, "Well, we have issues. The house has been there for about six years." "Oh, that's impossible." Here's picture. So, and that's, it's, I'm not sitting here trying to lay blame on anybody. I want to be a proactive member to get this taken care of somehow, some way. I don't care about who's at fault, who did what. I could really care less about any of that. I just want to get this taken care of, so my property is not devalued, so my neighbors' properties are not devalued, and I don't think that's too much to ask. The meetings that we have with Alva Cox and FEMA, there's also some other meetings on Thursday? Is that correct?
The meeting is Thursday, I believe. I thought the meeting was Thursday.
Was it today or Thursday?
Thursday.
When is it, James?
It's Thursday. It's a Morning Inn Avenue.
Correct. Is there anything today?
I'm not aware of any word. If there is, it sounds like...
I'm just trying to figure out when these meetings are and if y'all are privy to them are, at all.
Well, we're, I'm not personally. James is, but I'm not. Are you, Steve?
Well, we usually are privy to them, it's just exactly how we're privy to this situation. When it affects a constituent in the, in our precinct, and they come forward, bring it to our attention, whether it be a chughole, a road issue, and Don Lenny's involved, or James McCoslin, or the fire marshal. I mean, that's how we usually, we get a complaint or a concern. I mean, the maps that were drawn two years ago by FEMA, yes, or actually, it was longer than that when they were drawn, and we had the first initial meetings, because the courthouse wasn't even renovated. And Judge Rash was here, and we all sat down with them, and they started their proceedings and their procedures. But that, they notified the county then that they were going to do this. But that's the last contact, other than looking at maps, that we've really had with FEMA.
You know, it's really hard, you know, for the Commissioners, and when, when they roll a script, you know, some, some of these topographical maps out, and you have all these elevations, well, we don't know what they are.
I don't either.
I know, and so...
That's miserable.
You know, and then when they say, "We need you to approve this," well...
Exactly. It is what it is.
It is, yeah.
And it was the same way with me, when I was paying $300 to $1,500 a year. This battle's not worth it, and I understa...
Can I ask you a question without, and, and don't take this the wrong way? I'm asking you a simple question. Have you contacted Congressman Flores or Congressman Conaway?
No.
Okay, why not?
I'm trying to get it done locally, but that's...
The money, the money is a federal issue. It comes from the federal government, which is where Conaway and Flores work. I mean...
I have a, I have a military background, and when you go through a chain of command, and if we can't get anything accomplished here, then yes, that'll be the next stage. That'll be the next phase. I figure y'all have direct relationships with these congressmen in some way, shape, or form. You know how to call them, you know how to take care of them. That's what I would hope that you would be able to do for us as constituents. If you're not able to, then maybe that's what needs to go on. I don't know yet.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out how we get this done, without stepping on anybody and pissing anybody off, essentially. That's not what I'm trying to do here. I'm not trying to make anybody mad.
Well, I have the whole order that we're supposed to, I have the whole order from James McCoslin that we're supposed to approve in coming months, and it affects 400 and something flood plane applications in the county, but I've been aware now that FEMA maps are wrong. I mean...
You can't approve something that's wrong.
Well, then, that, but they say you got to approve it, even though it's wrong. I mean, that's, we're kind of...
Got to approve it and appeal it, is what they tell us, that's the...
Yeah, that, that, it's stupid, I know, but...
Yeah, I understand wholeheartedly, and that's why I'm trying to be an active individual in getting this done.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I didn't want you to take it wrong, because we'd have to do that. We have to call, you know, Jim Kefir or Senator Birdwell, we have to try to go up the ladder when money's coming from the federal government. James had, has looked into this. I mean, it's not a dead issue, and he's, one of the things that he's talked to me about, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but he can come to the podium, is we have issues with bidding laws and the way this came to us, but one thing we could do is, the way I understand it, James, and you might want to help me, is we could let Mr. D's paperwork go into FEMA as an appeal with the assumption that if they accept it, and they're going to reimburse the county, then we'll pay him. Why are you shaking your head, Mr. D's? I don't understand.
I'll address that if I may.
I, I, I want to, I mean, I understand their concern, but I, we have to follow the purchasing laws, but at the same time, that's one thing that when we've called other counties that's had this issue, that's what James has found out.
And with all due respect, you just went way over my head. I won't lie.
What was said was you could, we could go ahead and turn in, if he would turn his report into FEMA, and they saw the mistake, and they, they recognized the mistake, then they would reimburse, they would pay for his procedures, pay the county back, and then in turn, we could turn around and pay him back, is the way I understood, the way James came and reported to me, okay?
That would make sense in business. That makes good business sense.
Well, it makes, it makes sense to everybody, except the gentleman who's already done the work and expended the funds for the work. Okay, so, and I appreciate, Ken, what you're saying, because I'm in the same boat. I just had to pay $386 for flood insurance on a house that I've had for 20 years because FEMA changed its laws. The elevation didn't change, just the rules changed. And, and it's, it's wrong, okay? It's wrong in your case as well, and with every other homeowner out there. I hesitate to think what the impact's been economically, as far as the devaluation of properties, the number of vacant lots that are out there that haven't sold because somebody said, "Well, I got to tell you, it's in a flood plane."
Well, I got to build my house up 12 feet above the ease of another house that's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly. You got to put it on stilts to get it to qualifying. It's ridiculous.
Salinate would, that's the problem right there.
However, there's some other, some other issues involved, and, and don't, and don't feel like the Lone Ranger for not understanding either procedures or terms.
Correct.
Ken, with all due respect, and looking at your contract, I have notes for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, nine different acronyms on here that I have no idea what they stand for, that are used regularly through the, through the explanation of the contract. We deal with the same thing in healthcare. The federal government speaks in terms of acronyms, and don't tell us what they're talking about. There's no question in my mind that, for the work that's already been done, and for the procedure that's laid out by FEMA, as I understand it, where you have to have a licensed individual, like Ken D's is, perform the, the engineering services that provide for a report that challenges something that FEMA does. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes.
Okay. And in so doing, you have to, either as a county, or as an HOA, or as a body of some type, you then have to submit that through a FEMA procedure in a formal fashion, and that fashion is pretty well laid out in this agreement. So I understand the need to pay for work that's already been done, because the study has to be a completed study by a licensed individual before FEMA will even log it in and, and consider it, all right? There's still no guarantee, by the way, that they will change anything, no matter how wrong we show them to be, and that's because they're the federal government. So we have no guarantees on that basis. But from my position, and looking at this contract in detail over the last couple days at this agreement, and, and understand, Ken, there's a couple problems with it involving state law. I didn't mean to cut you out. Involving state law, we are not permitted by law to indemnify anybody in any agreement. That's simply against constitutional law in the state of Texas for a governmental body to do that. So we cannot indemnify you or your agency in the process of agreeing on this thing. It's just, I mean, we can't break the law. We'd be breaking the law if we did so.
I don't believe the word indemnified was used in my proposal, is it?
Uh, yes, sir. Well, perhaps it's not indemnify, but I think it means the same thing. It's, a second here, I think I marked it. Give me a second here. One other point that I just came across in looking at this is that all appeal and protest processing, if we do it as a government body and agreeing with it here, any follow-up court actions would have to be in Hood County, not Tarrant County. In the, in the county of the body signing the agreement. Also, again, law, unless you are given a change of venue.
With all due respect, I'll lay that dependence on who the defendant is. I can't fathom having a court case in Hood County. The county itself is the defendant, how's that work?
Because you're dealing with a district court, not a county court. But there's a district court here as well as Fort Worth, so there's no need to move a district-level challenge or legal case to a different district, is the point.
I can't address that.
Well, and I, and I'm not either, and that's why this needs to go to our county attorney.
Break up. Well, back to the indemnify?
Yeah, back to the indemnify. It's talking about, it's a hold harmless clause, is what it is. And that's, I just know that, because we've had the occasion to come up a half a dozen times during our tenure here, that we can't sign something involving a indemnified hold harmless clause on behalf of either party. We can request them from other parties, we cannot sign them as a governmental body.
It's on the strike.
Yeah, well, and I, and I'm sure that's not a problem. My recommendation is going to be, because I do understand, because I talk to the same folks you did up in Grand Prairie and other places with FEMA, that this has to be a certified study, and it has to be done and complete when it's submitted. We can't submit it betting on the come that if they approve recognizing their own mistake, reissue the maps, and we approve them, they will then reimburse us for that money. Even if they approve the changes, the LOMR, the, the map request that he puts in for change through this process, that doesn't guarantee them sending us a dime. We had, that's a whole nother appeal process.
Yes, it is.
A separate appeal process from this. This is simply to get the maps changed, so that you and I can show our banking institutions that we are no longer in a flood plain.
And they don't. What's really miserable about it is the banking institutions don't care.
Well...
All they want is a piece of paper that says, "Hey, you're there."
But there's another point. They not only don't care, but as Ken pointed out to me yesterday, and I checked it after he said it, and he's right, even after FEMA says that, the bank can still require you to have flood insurance. They have that right.
Who found yours, Commissioner Rome?
I'm sorry?
Who found yours?
Uh, who found what? The error or the...
The error.
Well, the, I mean, I knew it was an error because the, of the original survey.
So who paid, what engineer paid for it?
Who paid for it to be...
I did.
Okay, so why, why should the county taxpayers pay for this when FEMA made the mistake?
Steve, that's my question too, but it, but at the same time...
Let me, let me rearrange this idea. This keeps going back to blame, and I, it's a road that I don't want to go down. I hate blame, and I know it's a fact of life in the situation that we're doing. I just want to get this taken care of, all right? If you want to talk about blame, if you want to get blame in there, who allowed this house to be built here? This house is only six years old.
We're not looking for blame. We're looking for, we're going to open Pandora's box. I mean, I have a gentleman sitting in the audience right now that lives in one of my developments that absolutely floods every time it rains, and he's not seeing the maps when they come out. And we have 400-plus homes that are under flood insurance today. When they, when these maps are released and we've accepted them, how many is this going to affect? And they go get an engineer, just like, that's why I asked Commissioner Rome the question. Who paid for his engineering report? I mean, we can't open that kind of, I mean, we need the county attorney involved. FEMA needs to stand up and admit they've got, made a mistake.
I don't disagree with that. All I'm telling you is that if you want to get them in that position, this is the procedure that the federal government has set up, that we must send a...
I understand it, but if we have 10 developments show up here in the next two months with all having $15,000 bills, that's $150,000. Are you prepared to pay those?
No, I'm not, because I'm prepared to hear about them in advance, and perhaps shift some of the, the cost responsibility back to an individual HOA. The example would be where I live in Pecan. There are 19 of us on one street that are currently listed as being in a flood plain, and we're not in a flood plain. That's a FEMA error. In this case, it's also a FEMA rule, because they changed the rule that said, if any part of the lot's in a flood plain, all of it is, even though there's a difference of 66 feet between the bottom and the top of the lot, which makes no sense at all. But we have to go through a procedure to get that done. Now, Pecan Plantation is not going to support 19 of us on Ravenswood Road by paying that bill. So our choice is going to be to either come to the appraisal district, who it has an impact on, or to the county, or to do it collectively on our own. Those are the choices. In this case, I believe that from a constituent standpoint, now that we know about the error, I think it is still the county's responsibility to play some part in, in correcting it. Now, that doesn't say that we shouldn't at the same time establish a procedure, so that in the future, just because somebody thinks an error's been made by FEMA, they don't automatically dump a report on us that costs us $15,000 or $20,000 every time they think there's been an error. But instead, they go through some kind of a procedure, and we involve James, and we involve all the other people, and see if it indeed is... involve all the other people, and see if it indeed is a responsibility of the county for the constituents of the county. That's my own feeling. You know, how we go from there is, I don't know. I think that we need to get this study in, and to get it in, we need to pay...we need to do one of two things. If we refuse to pay this piece of business, this body of work, to pay for that, and then as a county take on responsibility for correcting federal errors, it's gonna cost us approximately four times as much to get the same study done. That's my point. Okay? So, you know, from that standpoint, it would be my position to find a way to, number one, give this to the county attorney to make certain that it's in a form that we can sign it, approve it, and issue the check for it, and then lock in from there with getting the procedure started with FEMA. Because that's a year-long procedure. That's not something that's gonna happen in 30 days.
What is your proposal, Ken? Just let it go away? And I'm not being rude. I'm asking a serious question.
No, not let it go away, but...
What is your proposal here?
Hammer on FEMA. I mean, you know...
May you allow it to be made?
Huh?
May the constituents?
No. We, I mean, James has already been in contact with them and told them we have a big issue here with this map coming up. The problem lies that Mr. Dees is probably a qualified individual, but we didn't vet him as well. It didn't go through our purchasing agent. I mean, we have laws that we have to follow. I mean, I'm not seeing his...
Let's take a different perspective at this. Let's say Mr. Dees is not involved in this at all. Let's say I paid for this study, and I bring this study to you, and I'm not asking for any money. How would you, what would you do next?
I would hope that we would send it into FEMA, and when they saw they made a mistake and they paid for your report, then you could get reimbursed on it.
Okay. What's the difference between that and what we're asking you to do, other than he's gonna get paid? Do you, would you feel better if we went somewhere else and paid $60,000? Would you feel better with a report that costs us $60,000?
You missed the whole point. I have to look out for a whole precinct and for the whole county, not just one individual in one individual area. And I feel for what's going on, believe me. Commissioner Rome was out of town when this came up. James was in my office at least three days showing me these reports and calling FEMA and talking to FEMA and saying, "We have an issue here." I mean, I have a big concern. We went from a 10-foot board down to a 2-foot board. When we adopt these maps or when they all come in play, this is gonna happen all over the county. It's gonna be a huge impact.
I agree. I agree.
And why shouldn't FEMA be accountable?
Okay.
There's no answer.
Here's a good way to look at it.
But I can also...
You sit here and say, "Why can't FEMA be held accountable for it?" I sit here and say, "Why can't the county be held accountable for it?" It's a stepping stone. Everybody looks up to everybody else. That's my perspective, and I'm just being honest with you. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm not trying to...
I don't take it that way.
Okay, that's cool. So what I'm trying to say here is, I'm looking to y'all to do whatever y'all need to do. You're looking at FEMA to get FEMA to do whatever they need to do. I don't know who the heck FEMA's looking at.
I got one other piece of bad news for all of you, and that is that in the state of Texas, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, in the state of Texas during the last, well, since the existence of FEMA, there is no record of them ever having refunded anybody any money.
That's what I understand. I have contacted former general counsel of FEMA. He was a longtime general counsel, you know, has a law firm that deals with these types of issues, currently dealing with the city of Houston versus FEMA. That's about six years to make.
Yeah, and it's not solved, so they still haven't paid anybody. Yeah, there's no precedent for them ever having reimbursed anybody, whether it be the county for this expense, or whether it be you or I for the expense of our flood insurance over X number of years, or for loss of property, loss of value, nothing like that. That's not what FEMA does. They're a very arrogant organization, quite frankly, who feels the same as the EPA does.
I might have lots of approach. Discuss a couple things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
Yes.
When we speak of the situation, Commissioner Rome, that you have in Pecan Plantation, that's considerably different than what we have found on Rough Creek.
Yeah, it's a rules change.
Considerably.
It's not an elevation change.
Right, it's clarification of what is out there, and your parcel is platted so that it partially crosses the floodplain line. So, and as you correctly pointed out, FEMA looks at that and says, "Well, then therefore the whole tract is suspect because part of it lies within the floodplain, part of it out." So what you must do is use a letter of map amendment.
Right.
If there was no fill placed to build that house, we would use a LOMA, a letter of map amendment, with an elevation certificate, which is probably what you did. And they will typically look at those and see if there's enough free board, the difference between the house itself and the water surface, and maybe it was 20 or 30 feet in your case. And they would look at that and say, "Well, obviously, your structure is not in the floodplain, so therefore, we're going to issue you a letter of map change."
Right.
The comical thing is that the map is not changed. It's just simply called a letter of map change.
I agree, but the similarity between the two is, I still have to buy flood insurance the same thing.
You may very well, and what I have suggested, and I was discussing this with Cindy Moser at Half Associates yesterday, we had a long conversation about two issues, Rough Creek issue and what we have found there, as well as the county's consideration of adopting the maps prior to August. We also discussed that at length. And we also discussed the other project that have underway, which is actually a series of LOMAs, probably maybe 100 or 200 in Pecan Plantation, part of which is in Johnson County.
Right.
And so Johnson County and I have been in conversation. I've also been in conversation with the Brazos River Authority about these issues as well. So, but there's a couple things I'd like to point out. What makes Rough Creek unique is the magnitude of the error that we have found. It's not a clarification in your case, or an individual property owner. This affects at least 50 houses that we can see on the aerial, but there again, it also affects an indeterminate amount of empty or vacant lots that we have to assume have been deemed unbuildable, and the term is inverse condemnation. That is the term. So whenever, and again, we're not lying, fault does not lie with the county. We're not saying that you're negligent in any way. But when a property is in fact condemned due to floodplain restrictions or any other restriction, and then it is found that that property was inadvertently, if you will, condemned because of its location in the county, it's called inverse condemnation. And that's a very serious thing. So we have a history of 22 years of inverse condemnation, and by my count, and again, this is a very rough count, perhaps 200 properties that are located in the Rough Creek watershed, okay? So the real number, I don't know yet because I don't have a platted maps. I can't, I have something that, it's almost a cartoon sketch that came from the subdivision map of the city of Granbury. You can actually see the parcels. And so we've tried our best to rectify that parcel map with respect to the floodplain map that we have developed. So that, the ink's not dry on the number of lots that might be affected, but we believe that upwards of 200 lots would be affected by, and positively impacted, I should say, because it looks like they would be brought out of the floodplain, at least in part, okay? Or if not in total. The houses that I counted, there was over 50, those houses, those structures are in fact taken completely out of the floodplain that is shown on the FEMA maps. So again, we have found a huge blunder. This is not a clarification of the map. It is a huge blunder in the map of up to 20 feet. We don't know how they made that mistake, but we certainly can prove without a doubt and easily that the mistake was made. Here's the issue, though. The fix that FEMA must abide by, they must abide by the rules of CFR 44, just like we do, as you do, as part of the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. James, your floodplain administrator, must abide by the regulations in CFR 44, just as I do as a certified floodplain manager, and just as FEMA does. And so when we discuss these kind of issues with FEMA, they don't really have any leeway to overrule any regulations that are in the federal register. They can't do that. So when we say that we're gonna seek favor with FEMA, FEMA can't grant that. They don't have the power to grant any favors. They can say, "Ken, we'll do whatever we can to assist the county in a timely review," but that's a loose promise, you understand? They still have a procedure. It's actually in the back part of my proposal I gave you. It's a very lengthy, detailed explanation of why it takes 12 months to get a letter of map revision. And I have, and I'd like to just give this to you guys so you can kind of at least weigh it in your hands, this is the kind of work that goes in a letter of map revision. Initially, James and I thought that we might be able to do this as a LOMA, a letter of map amendment, which is actually a little bit easier. It's kind of like the little brother, but the big brother is a letter of map revision. That was my original contention, that it would have to be a LOMA. I then backed off on that, and I said, "Well, I'll tell you what, let's petition FEMA to see if they could digest this as a LOMA, a letter of map amendment." And that might make the time span a little bit shorter, maybe three months instead of 12 months. But then after really digging into CFR 44, I realized that we're changing base flood elevations. By the very nature, those base flood elevations are wrong on the map, so we have to change the base flood elevations. And that automatically triggers a letter of map revision, okay? Which is a whole different animal than what you do on your individual property.
Right.
What you do, what each individual, a homeowner, might do on their own expense is $750 with a surveyor, or maybe less. It's that order of business. But a letter of map revision, these things start at about $60,000 and go way on up to maybe half a million. That's what these things cost, because a lot of work goes into these. When I first submitted the unsolicited proposal to the county for your consideration, and again, I have to express that it's for your consideration. We're not demanding anything or trying to twist anybody's arm. We got involved in this at the request of citizens, and they pulled my chain a lot of times before I decided that I would get involved. I really didn't want to get involved in this one, because I knew that there would be issues as to who pays for it. What kind of expense am I gonna be out to see this thing through? So since April 25th, when I gave you the first, or the proposal for the unsolicited proposal for this work, we had already had fully a third of the work done for a flood study, simply because of our investigation to find out where was the error. We then looked at it and said, "Well, then we already fourth of the way up the mountain. Why don't we just go ahead and climb the top?" I mean, that's just kind of the way things work. So we went ahead and finished and completed the flood study, and I'd like to just give this to you guys so you can look at it while I discuss a couple more key points, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna give it to you. Can you just kind of thumb through that? If you could, just pass it down.
Again, I would like to point out that a letter of map revision is not what is done, is being done on the Brazos River. When we discuss Half Associates and others who are involved in the remapping of the Brazos River, that is simply a remapping of the floodplain. That is not a flood study. This is a flood study, which means it's one part hydrology and one part hydraulics. And so what we start with, we start with a drop of rain, and we follow it all the way down through the entire watershed of Rough Creek, which is seven square miles. So we look at the entire watershed, and we calculate in what we call the 1% annual chance flood, which we normally call the 100-year storm, and we ascertain how much water is gonna actually run off, how much is gonna infiltrate into the ground, how much is going to run down the creek. And then we take the geometry of the creek, if you will, and we run that water down the geometry of the creek to see what would, how high would the water raise? Where would it be? And so our corrected flood study shows that it's 20 feet less than what FEMA had shown on their maps. This also changes the width of the floodplain, if you will. The width is dramatically decreased because of the topography of the land going down into the creek. So the width of floodplain changes dramatically by about a factor of, I think it's, in some cases, 25% as wide as what it was, what it was shown on the FEMA maps. So you're looking at an entire street and possibly at least one side of the street, if not both sides of the street, now being out of the floodplain, and to be honest with you, that never really were in the calculated floodplain at all, per the flood study, by the way, that was done in 1988, I believe. The maps were dated 1990, but the study, the flood study, was done about two years earlier, okay? And I might note that the original contention and the reason that I brought, that I took this work on is that the thought was that maybe the new bridge on 144 was not included in the hydraulic model, because that bridge was built, I believe, in the early 90s. And so the thought was, is that those maps, being that they were dated 1990, the FEMA maps, predated the construction of the bridge. So therefore, that was the basis of possibly the error that everybody thought would probably is out there. Well, we found that actually that was not the case. When we look at the 1988 model, the hydraulic model, they actually considered the construction plans of the bridge that was not built yet. And so that error was not there. We then spent about a week looking at everything else, hydrology, hydraulics, construction plans of the bridge, and we finally found the error. We don't know how they made it, but we did, it's almost as if they took the map and they put it on a...
Crunched it down.
And they put it on a copy machine and reduced it 50%. And then they expanded it. It's just a really odd thing. So we'll never really know exactly how they made the error, but we do know the fix. The fix is actually something that is dictated in CFR 44, the county, or the federal regulations, and it's called a LOMA. We have to go through that process to fix this error. We cannot do anything other than that. There is, there are no other options. We can't use a LOMA. We can't use a LOMA F by fill, which is what a homeowner would use. So this is a pretty serious thing. And so to get a group of homeowners to pay $60,000 for a flood study, that's just not gonna happen, you know? Even if it's 200 homeowners, 200 homeowners are not gonna be able to ante up $60,000 to pay for a LOMA, which in this case is in fact what we're talking about. Again, this is not a per parcel issue of clarification of FEMA map and the juxtaposition of the house with respect to the floodplain. That's not what this is at all. This is actually a major blunder, which must be fixed through a LOMA. So you're not gonna see this every day. I would challenge myself to find another error in Hood County of this magnitude. I would challenge myself, because I, this is the first one since 1985, and I've been doing this business since then. It's the first one I've ever seen of this magnitude. Normally, it'll be maybe a refinement. I would call it a refinement as opposed to a blunder. Normally, it'd be maybe a foot or two difference in what we find and what was in the hydraulic study, but we would never find 20 feet on a published map. That's the first time I've ever seen that. And so to imply that we might have these kind of errors in the rest of the maps, I think is really a, probably simply a faulty direction. I don't think you're gonna find that. And again, I've been doing this a long time, from Houston to Dallas to Austin to Fort Worth, all over. My work is all over the Texas, and I have never seen this kind of a magnitude. And I guess that's the key, is the magnitude of the blunder that we have found. You're just not gonna find that. There are other issues, obviously, in the FEMA maps, as I know that James, your floodplain administrator, is aware. I talked to Johnson County yesterday, and he expressed his angst about the new floodplain maps that are coming out in December of 2012 for Johnson County. And that's a whole 'nother discussion for another day. But the limits of our study, by the way, are in fact in the ETJ of the city of Granbury. They do not include the city of Granbury within the city Granbury city limits. So, and by the very definition of the authority of Granbury, they grant that authority to Hood County to oversee floodplain issues in their ETJ. And so James, your floodplain administrator, is the guy that would basically deal with this particular issue. It's not the city of Granbury. I want to make that very clear, that the limits of our flood study starts upstream of the bridge on 144 and upstream of the city limits of Granbury, okay? It then goes about 700 feet, and I don't know if it's Orion Way or Carroll Drive. I've actually seen it listed two ways on maps. Orion Way, okay. So the flood study goes about 700 feet west of Orion Way for a total distance of about, I believe it's 9,300 feet.
Just over a mile and a half.
Right. And actually, I think about a mile and a half, not quite two miles. And so we're extending the studied floodplain by about a factor of two as opposed to what is shown on the FEMA maps. And so that's very significant in that there wouldn't be any guesswork. And so that's very significant, in that there wouldn't be any guesswork. When you start looking at these houses, there's no guesswork like there is in a Zone A. And the point of contention on the FEMA maps, by the way, is in fact the Zone A, that they have greatly expanded the width and the length of the Zone As throughout the county. It's going to be a huge issue, because they took the liberty of reestimating the Zone As, which are unstudied regions. So this is a studied region. There is a prescribed order of events of what we must do. The first thing we do is we submit it to FEMA, and they go through the process, and it takes anywhere from six to 12 months to get a letter of map revision. Once they issue that, it would be an order of time before they actually include that change on the maps.
So what do homeowners do during this time?
Okay. What they would have is they would have that study in hand, and they could allude to that. Here's an important point. The county, and again, this is all in CFR 44, can adopt the map that is the best, the most accurate map available. You can in fact adopt by a piecemeal action, through your own order, this particular floodplain to append the maps that you, that you adopt from FEMA. You can do that. And James could look up, or I could give you that clause, where you can accept and adopt any map. About six years ago, the city of Houston adopted new FEMA, excuse me, new floodplain maps. This was prior to the submission of that work to FEMA. FEMA wasn't real happy about that, but here's the thing, FEMA has to adhere to CFR 44 just like everybody else. And again, CFR 44 calls out that the county can adopt the map that best represents the truth and the accuracy that, you know, that we know to be true. And so you could adopt these maps today, if you felt as though this study was accurate. You have that authority to adopt these maps right now. And so that's what I would suggest that you do, in addition to adopting the FEMA maps. And again, this process is ongoing. This is something that never ends. In terms of clarification, and again, I've never seen an error of this magnitude. Normally, what we do is we propose that we're going to channelize a creek a little bit, we're going to fill here, we're going to excavate over here as part of development. That's normally what I'm involved in. And, but in this case, we found this massive blunder. So again, this is why we're petitioning the court to assist the homeowners in pain for this, because it's really $60,000 worth of work, minimum. If you guys were to go out and an RFP, a request for proposals for this caliber of work, okay, it would be at a minimum $60,000.
Minimum.
And the higher rank, I mean, I only have four people in my company. I've got two PEs, myself, I'm a CFM, a certified floodplain manager, and we have a construction manager who is, who has an accounting degree, and he's a penny pincher guy. So, you know, we're a real small company, you know, we can perform, and we're providing this flood study for 25% of what it would actually go for if we were to respond to an RFP. There's no way we would do this work for less than $60,000.
More question for you.
Yes, sir.
Half Associates, which is an engineering firm that we met with four years ago-
Yes.
They were hired by FEMA and the BRA.
Yes.
When you pointed this out to them, what was their response?
Again, you have to understand that there were no flood studies performed on anything, not only Rough Creek, but there were no flood studies performed on the Brazos either. There was no hydrology, there was no hydraulics. All they did is they took the base flood elevations, which are, have been there now for years. I believe it goes back to about 1987, depending on which stretch of the Brazos you're talking about, downstream of the dam in Pecan. That study was performed in 1987, I have it.
Yep, right.
Upstream of the dam, I think it may be a little bit more current than that, but you have to understand that the work that Half did, not only in, on the Brazos and Hood County, but also elsewhere, throughout-
Austin Kingdom and Whitney.
But also, even on the Trinity, Tarrant County and Dallas County and all of the tributaries, the only thing that was done is that they remapped, in some cases, the BFEs onto new two-foot contour interval maps, okay? So the, you have to understand the intent of what they did. New maps became available through the North Central Texas Council of Governments here just a few years ago. I believe it was 2011 in Hood County, 2010?
Yes, we went in there.
Right. And so based on the availability of those new maps, then the floodplain was redelineated, if you will, on those new maps. That was the intent of the work that Half did, not only in Hood County, but also in Dallas County, Tarrant County, and so forth, okay? So it's simply a redelineation using existing flood study information. There was no restudy of hydraulics and hydraulics.
No map revisions drove it.
I'm sorry?
No map revisions drove it.
Well, it was certainly a map revision, but only simply because of the availability of new topography, if you will, new two-foot contour topography. So that was the only thing that was done. And so when you look at the cost of what they did versus the cost of what it would take for a new hydraulics, hydraulics and hydrologic study, it's apples and bananas. I mean, it's just two different things. There was not enough money to do what Half and folks like myself would suggest that they do, is to revisit hydrology because of the duration of time. You know, as time marches forward, we build more houses, we have more rooftops, we have more runoff that comes down the pack, okay? So we did that on Rough Creek. We went ahead and took into account all of the new development since 1988, which is when the old study was performed, and we completely redid the hydrology from scratch for seven square miles. And so we, we looked, and here's a multifamily over here, you know, here's, here's a single family. We take into account the land usage and how it's changed, and we came up with considerably higher flows in the 100-year flood. We then applied that to the hydraulic model, and we actually showed about a half a foot increase in the 100-year storm as compared to the water surfaces in the old flood study. Understand that the maps do not reflect the old flood study. We didn't have, we didn't find a problem really with the old flood study, even though, although we went into more detail on ours, we went into more detail on our flood study, but other than that, we didn't really find fault with the old flood study. Where we found fault was in whoever made the maps from the flood study. So whoever made the maps took the flood study, made the maps, and that's when the error was made. So it wasn't the engineering company that did the hydraulics and hydrology. All of that looked pretty good. So I guess in summary, I just, I want to point out that this is a completely different animal than Commissioner Roan, you or I, with our individual house, going out here and helping clarify what the floodplain issue is. In this case, we have a blunder, a huge blunder, which must be corrected in considerable effort with a LOMA, a letter of map revision. It's the only option that we have. And so I would certainly encourage you to assist these citizens in paying for this, simply because they cannot pay for this. And if they cannot, we don't know when this is going to be done. 22 years has already gone by. If we wait for FEMA to come up with the money and appropriate this money, you're going to be there a long time. And I certainly don't work under that fashion that I might get paid someday. But that's just not the way any businessman would work. We can't do that. We just can't, we can't enter into contract that we might get paid for the work. And I understand that you could say, well, Ken, we didn't authorize you to do the work in the first place. I understand that. You did not authorize this work or commission this work, the citizens of Hood County did. But what they're doing is they're petitioning you as the county to assist them and come to their aid. That's what they're asking.
It'll come back to you.
Well, we believe that it will. I mean, obviously, there's tangible-
It'll come back to us in the fact that-
Sure.
The one thing that you said prior to you getting up there, Ken, the one thing, if Greg Stewart condemns those houses, it'll come to us and add more taxes. My problem still lies with opening Pandora's box all the way across the county. Ken is very professional, and what I've read looks very professional. I've not seen an RFQ or an RFP or an RFE that keeps me legal, and that's a question that the county attorney needs to ask. I don't know if I can legally pay him.
Certainly, and it's not unheard of for an engineer to submit an unsolicited proposal for work. It does not have to be, I can tell you that without a doubt, because I have seen it happen before. So we certainly are within our right to submit an unsolicited proposal, and the county has the right to accept it or refuse it. It's just that simple.
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably a couple issues that maybe even in Kelton's absence, that Larry might want to look at on here, but I see no, I don't see anything that is a deal killer to, to making, not even exception, but finding the rule that's necessary, as Stan said.
We could certainly strike the hold harmless clause, as you called it. We can strike that. I mean, I understand your point on that.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I just didn't understand what you're talking about by identify, but that's fine.
My concern is, and I agree with what you said too, I don't think, I don't think we're going to have floodgates open, Steve, because I don't think you're going to find this level of error, even suspected with FEMA anywhere else in the county, other than right here on the face of the lake with this particular, this particular neighborhood. And, yes?
Mr. Davis, you're pretty sure that there is no other errors like this, is that correct?
It's extremely rare. I haven't seen it in 28 years, whatever it's been now, of doing this kind of work. I've never seen one.
Okay.
Even approaching this, remotely approaching this.
Have you looked at the big picture around Granbury to where if this were to come up again, you'd be welcome to the same state?
Again, I don't think we can anticipate finding this kind of error. The only, I've only heard of one other error like this, and it was identical, and it was in Rockwall County, and that's been some years back. And, but, you know, I'm in contact with CFMs or certified floodplain administrators around the state. Cindy Moser and I discussed this, she's with Half Associates, she's never seen one like this. The only person that I could find is an associate of mine out of Dallas. He said, you know, I found one almost exactly like that in Rockwall County here several years back. And so he and I confer, and I confer with all these folks. We're a tight-knit community, there's not that many CFMs in the state, just a few, a handful. And so we communicate on these issues, and this is the only one I've ever heard of, it's just one in Rockwall. I'm sorry, you've got a question or no?
Yeah, you said something that's just driving me crazy.
Uh-huh.
If FEMA and BRA is only mapping the lake-
Yes.
And we turn to FEMA for flood control, and we turn to BRA for flood control, and you said right there a minute ago, it's been 22 years ago since this was, this has happened.
Yes, sir. And the reason they don't do it is because they don't have the money.
So we expect the taxpayers of Hood County just to pick up the tab because of mistake that the state government and the federal government's made?
It is not right, but the, I think the thing is, the approach here is we have to walk before we run.
Well, if it's been 22 years, then we can have a couple more weeks to have a FEMA representative here at the July 10th Court.
That's your call.
Well, I mean, it's been 22 years since this has been, been this way. Why would we, I want the county attorney to tell me I can legally pay this bill, and secondly, I want James McCoslin to have a FEMA representative here to answer questions.
You know, I'm not going to get into a fight with FEMA on this. There's not enough budget.
That's who the fight's with.
There's not enough budget. No, it's really not. You guys are the local representatives for the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. You guys carry out their regulations. You guys are the first line of responsibility on these types of issues. You're the ones that basically state, sir, you cannot build on this property. You are the ones that carry out these regulations. And I guess if you, if you don't want to claim responsibility, being that you state that you are responsible for floodplain, then you have to define what responsibility means. Are you responsible or are you not?
And I have another one of these going on in my precinct right now, is that not correct, Mr. Lenny? Out on 51 North? Where we have two engineers with two different opinions. I don't, you've done fantastic work, everything you've done is right. I just want to make sure we can legally pay you to start this cause, and James McCoslin hasn't weighed in at all, and he's the county's floodplain manager.
I submitted this back in April, we're almost in July. We're almost in July. I believe I've given the court ample opportunity to respond to this, and I can't fathom why, what would be gained by simply tabling this thing, which has been suggested to me, because I already see a pattern of delay and refusal to accept responsibility. That's what I see.
Well, I think we're now perhaps down to discussing, discussing maybe attitudes rather than facts. I think what I'd like to do to bring this to a head would be to make a recommendation, indeed a motion, to submit this contract to the county attorney for payment. And what that means in my mind is that, that the purchasing agent, the auditor, and the county attorney have got to get together ASAP and find a way, number one, how do we legally get it paid, all right, without breaking any of the rules? Number two, how do we get the contract in a form that the attorney is happy enough with that he pulls the trigger for us to sign it, so we can pull the trigger on Ken to get going with FEMA? Because until that happens, nothing is going to change, okay? Nothing's going to change for these citizens or for anybody else that has something coming down line, including whatever your discussion up north might be about. Nothing will change until we get the process begun with FEMA, get inside the process, understand what it is. I agree with Steve completely. I would love to have a FEMA rep here to talk to, and we'll use this as an example. Number one, the process shouldn't be, in my estimation, as complicated as it is. I can't imagine any decision of this nature taking a damn year to get done, but it does by their procedural schedule. So if we have to live with that, let's pull the trigger, get it started, find a way to do it legally, and move forward, because otherwise, nothing changes.
And the other thing goes along with this is, you say you want a FEMA representative here. I agree 100% wholeheartedly. But it's like the other day, I was trying to ask questions about FEMA, ended up in Mr. Cochran's office, ended up in Alva Cox's office, I ended up down with the mayor of the city. Then I ended back in Mr. Cochran's office. I don't know who to call, I don't know who to do, who to talk to, but I will find out if I need to. And that's where I'm relying on y'all, that y'all have all the phone numbers of the appropriate people that need to be called. This needs to be done legally, and I agree with you 100%. I agree with you 100%. But we've got to do something to get it started, to keep it moving, and that's what we're trying to get done here.
I agree with that 100%, but at the same time-
Yeah, that's what my head's like.
You said it when you started, it's all about payment. Everything the court does is about payment.
Everything the federal government does is a follow-the-dollar issue. I don't care what it involves.
What happens here, Ken, if I purchase this from you? Can I take that and just use it on my property and let them go get their own? Is that a possibility at all?
The floodplain administrator for the county or the county judge would have to sign off.
They'll have to sign off.
You would have to sign off on the request, the application for a LOMA.
Yeah, because if we are making a request as a county for a LOMA-
Correct.
We are the first line of defense and responsibility.
Correct, and that was the point of this conversation.
Right.
Why I asked that question right there. One way or the other, it comes back right here.
Well, we have a motion right now to, to turn the-
This to the county attorney for approval for payment in consideration of discussion with the auditor and the purchasing agent, to find a way to legally get it paid. And then, and then that would pull the trigger to get it submitted to FEMA.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Is there any way that I can be kept in the loop and all that?
Come to the meeting.
You're sending this to the county attorney and the auditor for payment.
That's what, that's what the motion is.
For them to find the way to legally pay it, yeah.
I will be supporting it.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion carried with two votes for and one against. It is now 11:30, we are adjourned.